We'll start in just a minute and we are already live streaming.
Okay, 20 seconds. Okay, go ahead when you're ready.
To call this planning mission order at 6:30 PM. Renee, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bayham? I'm here. Ms. Zink?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Here, we're getting lots and lots of feedback.
Mr. John? Mr. Daniels? Mr. Jablonsky?
Here.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
I'm here.
You can mute everybody. Yeah, right here. He's here.
Yeah.
Can you mute them all?
Yeah, I can mute them all. Don't. That's what the feedback was.
Okay, and Ms. Byrd?
Here.
And I saw Mr. John come on.
I'm here.
You need to turn your camera on. We can't see you.
Yes, I'm.
Okay. So, we have a quorum.
Hey, just a reminder for everybody if you can please mute your line if you're not speaking. And remember to unmute if you do want to speak. Moving to our consent items. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, please announce which items are being told to be discussed in their regular order. Okay, I would like to ask for a motion.
No move from Commissioner Beck.
In a second?
Second, from Steve McDaniel.
Oh, please. Oh, do I need to read the consent items? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize. Okay, consent item number two, TMP 163. Approval of the February 11th, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. Item three, COS 2021. Of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Diane Brown GRS for McDaniel Meadows for approximately 16 point, um, 16.59 acres of property generally located on the east side of Avenue, approximately a half mile north of Franklin Road. Item four, COS 2021. Consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Paul Mansa with Mark Deal in his for Mansa Farm. They variance to the width of the private road for approximately 32 acres of property generally located on the north side of Cedar Lane Road, approximately a quarter mile east of 36th Avenue Southeast. Item five, C 2021-1. Consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Brandon Stevens, Mac Backs, Irving P.C. for Heritage Infinity. R variance to the width of the private road, approximately 59.564. Property generally located on the side of the east of East Cedar Lane Road and a quarter mile east of 132nd Avenue Southeast. Item six, PP 2021-8. Consideration of a preliminary plat size, Storage Oklahoma LLC, SMC Consulting Engineers, P.C. Park Hill Mixed Use Edition, a planned unit developed for approximately 4.1539 acres of property located at the southeast corner of East Tecumseh Road and 12th Avenue Southeast. Item seven, PP 2021-9. Generation of a revised submitted by Ash Investments LLC and Farzani Development LLC. Still for approximately 17.84 acres of property generally located south of East Lindsay Street, approximately half a mile east of 24th Avenue Southeast. I apologize that I did not read the order.
Well, my motion's still staying.
Thank you.
And my second, I still second that.
Do we need to recast the vote, Renee?
Okay, well, we haven't voted yet, so. Ms. Bayham? Yes. Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
Now moving to our non-consent items. Item eight, O dash 2021 dash 32. Highway Nine Land Co. LLC and Bellatona Development LLC request closure of existing 33-foot statutory right-of-way of 36th Avenue Southeast, beginning on the north side of Wood Valley Road and extending north for approximately 3,437.23 feet, slightly less than three-quarter mile. Uh, and if we could have a staff presentation, please.
Oh, that's a long one.
Lawrence, in other words.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thanks regarding the request. Then we'll turn it over to the applicant. In 1985, City Council declared that this section of right-of-way as a closed section for building permit purposes. Then in 2003, the preliminary plat for Summit Lake, Summit Valley was approved without the use of the statutory right-of-way. 36th Avenue was not to be constructed. When Bellatona was preliminary platted, it used somewhat the same design. Again, 36th Avenue not part of any construction for public roads. With the Transportation Comprehensive Transportation Plan, this section of road is not a part of that plan. Thereby, staff supports the request.
Any questions for the staff? I did have a question if we could just get clarification that the west 33 feet of the right-of-way will still maintain, will still be there, and it's only the east 33 feet of that right-of-way that's being closed.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Well, this is Commissioner Beck. I guess my question is, I look at that 36th Avenue, 48th is complete. You know, 60th, 72nd street, they're all complete, 24th. Both these roads also provide access for fire trucks and things like that. It just seems weird that this street doesn't go through and won't go through. I'd like to know for reasoning.
Part of it is the terrain, the contours. And through the Bellatona development, there will be access at some point in time to Lindsay Street through the development. But the section line road was not, is not a position to be constructed.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. Can I ask, once that road is connected up to Lindsay, I mean, is it, is it basically going to be a new 36th Avenue?
No.
Or is it intended to be a small neighborhood street?
It's, it's a neighborhood street. It's for the neighborhood.
So will it be a gated community?
No.
Okay.
Uh, this is Commissioner John. I think I totally support what David has said. I mean, there is going to be a new hospital constructed not too far from this location, the new Norman Regional. So, uh, I mean, I don't know, like you said, 48th is complete, other streets are complete. If this could be perhaps upgraded to a proper street instead of just a neighborhood road, that would be really helpful in the future. This is just a comment.
As I've indicated, City Council in the past has already, for all purposes, with the approval of the preliminary plats, has declared that this is not going to go through.
This is Commissioner Byrd. For context, can we just clarify, I believe 66 feet as a right-of-way, would it be a four lanes of traffic, two lanes in one way and two lanes the other? So 33 feet that would still be remaining as an available right-of-way on the west side would allow one lane of traffic on each, each direction moving? Is that correct? Should the plans change in the future?
Well, uh, as far as the west side, a portion of that, I anticipate, will be vacated with Summit Valley whenever they come forward with final plating.
Well, there's Commissioner Beck again. You know, you got Lindsay Street, you got Highway Nine, you got all these other streets as far in that new health facility sits at the corner of, what, Highway Nine and what's the north-south street there?
24th.
Yeah, there's plenty of access to it. I guess I, I don't see the harm in this or any potential problems, just I don't understand it.
Is, is there, this is Byrd, sorry, is there a preliminary plat? It looks like that is agricultural zoning on there, and I believe those are larger residential lots that are over there with single-family homes on them along the west side of that statutory right-of-way? So is that considered for a preliminary plat too for vacation that you're already aware of that just hasn't come forward yet?
No, it would be the continuation of a Summit Valley. The northern portion are large 10-acre tracts, five-acre tracts. And the south portion of 36th, there are two houses that are on the west side of 36th that there would be no vacation of the right-of-way because that's their access point.
I guess my, my question then is the Summit Lakes, where, can you show me where that Summit Lakes would end? Is that within that R1 zoning that we're looking at here? Or is that within that green A2 zoning along the west?
It's, it's within the R1. And, and you could be correct in regards to the A2 is abutting that section line road. So I stand corrected on that.
Any other questions for staff? Like to request an applicant presentation?
Thank you. This is Gunnar Joyce with Rigor Law Group representing the applicant. Uh, and I have a couple images that I can share, uh, but really, we were just here tonight to kind of answer some questions that you might have. Uh, obviously, you have brought up a few and Ken accurately described the request here. Here's the approved preliminary plat for this neighborhood. Uh, what we're talking about tonight is, is in gray down here, running through mostly the backyard of some of these approved homes. Uh, and part of our request, we initially asked, uh, to, to vacate all the way up to the north of this Bellatona, uh, development. And working with staff, we've, we've matched up the legal description to be vacated with the resolution that City Council passed back in, I believe, 2015. It was R dash 1516 dash 94 that Ken already referenced in which City Council declared this closed and not available for, for public access. And, uh, that's really the intent of this request is to clear up, uh, basically the, the title issue. The city's already, uh, declared, uh, multiple times that, that there's no plan to develop this road. That it is not even included in the comprehensive transportation plan for the city. Uh, so City Council has made a multiple actions showing that they have no intent to develop this out. And that's really the request here is to clean it up from the preliminary plat. Uh, after this, it would go into the district court action. So first off, right through the city process, after this, we file in district court and provide notice again to all the property, uh, surrounding property owners and then to all the utility holders, franchise holders. Uh, there are no utilities in this right-of-way. And no city utilities, we're not aware of any other ones, but if there were, that would come up through the district court, uh, action as well. Happy to take any additional questions.
Well, this is Commissioner Beck, and I only have one comment. And Sean Rigor, as an architect, ought to know this, north is always up on any drawing, and this is a bad drawing because you've got north off to the right, I guess. And there we go. Thank you very much. It should be consistent with all the other maps that we were shown. You're trying to confuse us, and I wanted to just clarify that.
Commissioner Beck, I didn't put this one together. It's the first thing Sean said when he saw this, just, just so you're aware, he's on the same page as you are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'd like to open for audience comments, which if you are in person, do we, do we have anybody in person? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know. But if we have some, we don't have anyone in person. Uh, so just a reminder, make sure to state your name and address before making any comments, and we will go through in turns. Seeing none, I'd like to move to Planning Commission Discussion.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. You know, just thinking about how the shape of Norman is changing and has changed in this side, on that side of town, that's the side of town I live on. In the past 10 years, it's changed quite a bit, and it's hard to project out 20 years into the future and what the needs might be. Like Commissioner Beck said, uh, 24th, 48th, and these other roads do connect all the way down, and I'm, I'm a little worried that it might be short-sighted to, to cut off any future options. I mean, we could always close the road in a few more years, but you, once, if this is done, then you can't reopen the possibility.
This is Byrd. Um, when I plan to vote yes on this, and my reasoning for that was specifically because 33 feet were still being maintained, so that in the same concept that if something changed in the future, a two-lane, which is consistent with what we've seen previously in some of that more rural area, um, servicing some of those larger land plots would still be available. Also, two lanes of traffic would be more appropriate backing up to an addition like this. And I, I think that some of the other larger plots of land out there might appreciate a little bit less traffic. So even if there was a plan in the future for that connecting on there, I think a two-lane is probably at this point better served for that area. Of course, we don't know what things will look like in 20 years. Um, I would be in support of allowing approximately, it's like 45 houses that are now being able to be built, which is not to say that a different design couldn't possibly fit those houses in, but seeing a, a pretty significant housing shortage. Right now, we have, as of the February MLS statistics, there was 0.7 months available of houses for purchase. And we're specifically seeing more and more shortage of houses under $300,000 in an economically feasible area. So I would like to see more houses in Norman to serve the market that is desperately needing them for buyers. And very in favor of seeing 45 houses go in and still preserving 33 feet on the other side of that right-of-way.
Well, this is Commissioner Beck. I move to approve.
And I'll take a second?
Williford, second.
And a vote?
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
No.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to one.
Our next item is going to be an item that I will be recusing from. So I am going to pass over to Steve McDaniel to read the items, and I will rejoin following.
Sounds good. Uh, we have item nine A, R dash 2021 dash 95. Jonathan Hunnell requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from office designation to commercial designation for approximately 0.1 acres of property located at 309 South Peters Avenue. And nine B, O dash 2021 dash 33. Jonathan Hunnell requests rezoning from R3 multifamily dwelling district to C3 intensive commercial district for approximately 0.1 acre of property located at 309 South Peters Avenue. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Good evening, Commissioners. Let me share the screen here. How do I make it bigger?
Uh, it's only showing this, but.
Shouldn't it be bigger?
It's only showing that part of the screen.
Oh, okay. So it's good to go? Okay. So, uh, good evening, Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. As you stated, uh, the applicant is requesting a land use amendment as well as rezoning for this tract. This is the existing Norman 2025 within that area. The subject tract there is designated as office. You can see there's office to the west. To the north, we have institutional, which would be the courthouse. We have some additional office, and then there's commercial over to the east. To the south, we also have some more institutional, which would be where the senior citizens center is located. For the proposed, this would change the subject tract over to commercial designation. For the rezoning, the existing zoning in the area, as stated, this tract is still zoned R3. Over the years, it has been converted from a house to, uh, office use. It's been a couple different offices, uh, but it's still remained under the R3 zoning district. To the north, we have C2. To the east, we have C2, and then we have some C3. To the, uh, sorry, I think I said in the north to the east. To the north, we have C3 across, then, uh, the courthouse is still designated as R1. We have some C2 to the west, and then again, the senior citizens center to the south is still zoned R3. This is the subject tract here. Got some pictures of the site. This is the back of the, uh, structure. This is a parking lot that's, uh, sits on the east side of the structure. It does belong to someone else, and the applicant can outline some of the possible agreements that he may, uh, have for, uh, some of the possible parking arrangements, although there is a, a great deal of parking, uh, within this area, public parking, the on-street parking. This is looking to the east. This is looking back to the south. The house is situated over here. This is looking north, courthouse, and then of course, you have, uh, Main Street, just two blocks up there. Then this is the, uh, the structure itself. As you can see, there's a drive on the, uh, north side of the building there. Um, as I stated in the staff report, the applicant, uh, hopes to make this area some, um, outdoor seating with some, uh, umbrella tables and stuff like that, because it really wouldn't be, uh, proper to have it as a, a parking area. There's the senior citizens center. Uh, this is the alley that sits on the south side. There's the courthouse. That was taken from the, uh, in front of the, the building there, so the courthouse is, is not far. And then I took this one so you could see in the distance there. That's actually where the county is building their new healthy living, uh, building. So again, there's, you know, there's, it's not very far for, uh, people to walk. There's sidewalks all over the area there, and then Legacy Trail also is just to the east, uh, west of this site. Uh, so just a couple of things, uh, that, you know, the applicant is here tonight. He can give you a, a brief presentation as well, but he's planning to, uh, utilize the site for a downtown, uh, cafe or, you know, a sandwich shop. It's, um, but again, like I said, it's located approximately two blocks from Main Street, um, and there are, uh, public sidewalks around the entire area. Miller Historic District is south of this location, so, uh, there is, you know, residential that could, uh, walk up there and, uh, visit the site. So I'll present this, uh, so we've got Resolution R 2021 dash 95, as well as ordinance number O dash 2021 dash 33, uh, for your consideration. And like I said, the applicant is, uh, here with a presentation for you as well.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Uh, Jane, this is Naman. I, I think I missed, what's the, what's this building currently used for? I think I missed that.
Um, currently, I, I believe there's been a couple different office uses in there. Uh, when I took some pictures, it looked like there was a, um, drafting office, an architect's office or something like that that was there.
It was an architect's office.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, I thought, I thought that's what I saw on the sign.
Good, thank, thanks.
No more questions from Commissioners? We'll go ahead and have the applicant do his presentation.
Excellent, thanks. I was gonna share, I think, and you need to unshare there. Oh, fabulous. You got me there? Well, thank you for, uh, having us. Uh, this is, uh, John Hunnell, it's actually my brother Mark Hunnell, my business partner. So just to show you really quick, um, a little bit about Levity Breakfast House, as we mentioned, um, and thank you for showing those pictures. I located it 309 South Peters. There is the, uh, there's a picture of the house there. Just a little bit about what we, uh, what we want to do. Uh, so this has been a family dream, uh, since our childhood. So, uh, from family classics to newfound loves, uh, this cafe will celebrate our Portland roots, grew up in Portland, Oregon, uh, but really highlighting our Norman flavor since we've lived here, uh, for the last decade. Uh, but it's just a fun pictures of, uh, when we actually got started. This is my brother and I, my mom, uh, currently also works with us, uh, make baking and. also works with us, baking, and just some pictures of my brother and his wife and my family. So we are bringing, really, over 40 years of cafe experience to Norman, excited both from a coffee and bakery and lunch and breakfast spot, excited to bring that in. As I kind of mentioned, this is a great location. So with the historic Miller District to the south, the cafe spot is uniquely situated to offer a neighborhood cafe and meeting spot. It also will offer a great breakfast and lunch option for neighboring businesses, great walkability, as highlighted, and that really aligns with the community goals and what Norman's trying to do in this area. And we're excited to preserve a 100-year-old house and a piece of Norman history. A little bit about the house, as you see there, I did have a couple shots of what it looks like inside. It is an architecture firm. It's been, I think, a law office and architecture firm over the last few years. But the inside is beautiful, great light, great windows, great wood floor. So we want to maintain that while updating, obviously, to add a kitchen, but keeping the house as it looks, because it's in incredible shape. So kind of mentioned, we would have to put in a ramp and landing pad right there, where you see, kind of where the door is, just to make it ADA code approved, and then some patio seating to the north right now, which is a driveway which would have to go away. So why Levity Breakfast House? We're ready to expand after running a successful scone and coffee business for the last couple of years here in the area. We want to create a neighborhood cafe that enhances the community, create meaningful employment. It's one of the things that's really important to me. Really, it's an issue in America, but especially even in Oklahoma, creating jobs that benefit people, which obviously benefits the community and benefits everyone that comes in. But we're very excited about that and continuing to expand that. We want to feature the foods we love since our childhood, and we're excited to preserve a 100-year-old home and open it to the public. So those are our goals.
Um, this is Commissioner Beck. Got a question. If we're ready to... So where has your coffee shop, the bakery been?
I do wholesale right now and catering. So not as much catering over the last year, but wholesale to different coffee shops in the area, Oklahoma City, Edmond, Norman. And I bake out of a kitchen in Oklahoma City, a commissary there.
You bake for who?
Different coffee shops, different places, and then do some, you know, some also for events or things like that.
Are you gonna have caramel pecan rolls?
No, no. No, definitely, definitely can. I do a caramel pecan scone. Currently, I have 75 flavors of scones. So there is a caramel pecan scone that uses some of the local, on freezer.
Commissioner Williford, I think this is a fantastic idea. I plan to support it. I really enjoy seeing residential homes that some people would tear down, turned into businesses. I think it's fantastic. I think of Tulips on Campus Corner. I think it's great usage. It makes me excited. And I also am just really excited to see a business open after a year that has been so troubling for so many businesses. And I congratulate you. This is really, really great. And I'm glad everyone votes to support it.
Do we have any more questions from the commissioners? Let's go ahead and open the questions up for audience comments. Seeing none, let's go ahead and do, do I have a motion?
This is Jablonsky, motion to approve.
I second...
Williford, second. Oops, sorry.
Yep, that's right.
Looks like we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and ask for a vote.
Ms. Behan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Appreciate that. And we will move on now to item 10O-2021-35. Joe Wilson requests special use for a medical marijuana dispensary for property currently zoned I1 Light Industrial District for approximately 1,248 square feet of the property located at 3001 36th Avenue Northwest. And if we could start with a staff presentation, please.
Hello, Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. We have an application for special use for a medical marijuana dispensary, Joe Wilson, at 3001 36th Avenue Northwest. The property is currently zoned I1, which allows for growing and processing by right. There's more industrial to the north, and then it's surrounded by PUDs. The medical offices, medical offices are to the east. We have a commercial development to the south, to the west, residential neighborhoods, and I believe it's OGNE to the north. Here's an aerial of the property. They're in this building, right at 36th. Here we have the, just the front of the building, looking north on 36th, looking south. Then there's a brick wall for the residential development, just straight up 36th. And here we have the proposed floor plan where the dispensary will be in the building. And with all that, I forward this request for special use for medical marijuana dispensary as its number O-2021-35 for your review and consideration. And we do have the applicant on the call for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd like to open to the applicant presentation.
Hello, everybody. We don't have a presentation, but we are here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I guess this is from, this is Naman. Are you, do you have any other businesses similar to that in the city or anywhere else?
We do. We do. I currently own Green Buffalo here in Norman, and we have three locations. And we don't have any outside of Norman, but this would be our fourth location in Norman.
Fourth location in Norman, okay. I have a question for the city. I'm always concerned about the number of dispensaries that we are giving license to or approving. Do you know the current count by any chance?
I don't. Jane, do you have an account?
I'm sorry, I don't. Those are licensed through the city clerk's office. So I wouldn't, I mean, I could get that number for you, but I don't have it on hand tonight. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. No problem, Jane. Thanks.
This is Bird. I just have a question. Are you only going to use a portion of the building it looked like? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're just going to use the northwest portion, northwest 1,200 square feet for the dispensary.
And is the rest of the building currently leased, or is there an intent for lease?
It is. The rest of the building is currently leased, and we operate a processing and grow license out of that facility.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions of the applicant? Like to open to audience comments. Just a reminder again, please state your name and your address before beginning, and we'll go in turn. Seeing none, I'll open to planning commission discussion.
You asked about the numbers. It amazes me how many we have and how many we still have, because I just assumed there are a lot of them that were going to go out of business because we had so many. But apparently Oklahoma is allowing them to be very successful.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. McDaniel will make a move to approve.
Well, then I'll second.
Williford, second.
I beat you.
End of vote, please.
Ms. Behan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
No.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to one.
Okay. Our last item, or I'm sorry, second to last item, 11 miscellaneous discussion. Does the staff have any information for the commission?
I do not, but if you have any questions or anything, please let us know, and we'll get you answers back or whatever you need.
Well, Jane, as far as the visitability ordinance, where are we at in terms of getting that out of city staff and to the city council?
Well, we actually have a draft, you can't see my hands, but draft, from the document that was submitted to staff from the previous council member. We are cleaning it up and looking at how we can implement some of the credits that council wanted, you know, to have with the the changes that, you know, a builder would make on a property and everything. So as I understand it, probably 1st of April, maybe, that we might be on one of the council committees. I can't promise that, because that's up to the city clerk to, you know, get those assigned, and there might be other things that get assigned. But we're working on it actively. Our development services manager is working on it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments?
It's always good to see other people show up for a meeting, just to show up for a meeting. That's one of the things that you can see in Zoom, is seeing lots of people, who are not lots, but people that are here that are just here. So thank you for coming.
I second that. I appreciate the availability that the Zoom meetings provides to let people, more people participate than if it was just on YouTube, where it's a one directional conversation. Okay, I will move for adjournment if there's nothing else to come before the commission. And then I will declare this meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.
You too.
Hi, guys.
Hi.